We do have a forum. And. But Peter isn't here yet, so. Okay, this is the nineteen two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. Planning Board members present are Tom Mekus, Harry Corzlin, and me, Jason Shaw. Absent is Peter Cutner, and of course Denise Donnelly is no longer on the planning board, having been elected to the Board of Selectmen. So we have four seats right now on the planning board. We're going to start our meetings as we always do. We start with public comment for people in the waiting room audience to make comments about anything relating to planning. We'll take them, and we have a pretty short meeting tonight. One, actually only one substantive item on the agenda. So should be pretty quick, but anyway. Let's let's get started. We have public comment period, so I'll see if anybody's got their hand up. That's that's what we're looking for.
Okay, I do have Toby with his hand up. Toby, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian ninety-five Granite Street. At the recent town meeting, I spoke about the about the open space residential development, which was Article D. On page one thirty-one, I read the section Housing Types. I did not get a response or an answer. I got insulting remarks instead. I'll try again.
Where did you get insulting remarks from?
From Jason Shaw. This is section eleven, Roman numeral eleven K two. And I would like an interpretation, an explanation of it, and I also want to know whether the planning board wrote it or whether the Metropolitan Area Planning Council wrote it, and I'll go slowly this time. Housing types subdivision residential dwelling units shall be single-family structures. Duplexes may be allowed by special permit if designed to resemble single-family homes. Duplexes will be considered as two residential dwelling units. Single-family structures or duplexes will be located on individual lots. Multiple-unit arrangements on a shared lot or a combination of individual lots and shared multiple-unit lots may be allowed by special permit in cases where such arrangements best serve the conservation purposes of this bylaw on the specific parcel. Can you please explain that?
Well, you just read it. I think it's self-explanatory. I understood it.
It's gibberish. Who wrote it? Did you write it or the Metropolitan Area Planning Council?
If you're going to be confrontational, I am going to cut you off.
Censored. And no answer.
Next, next comment.
Apparently, you're unable to explain it.
Well, I'm not. I'm not going to go through it. It's self-explanatory, and I don't want to say that again. I, as you were reading it this time, I said exactly what it meant. When and if the time comes where we have to apply the section to an open space residential development, I'm confident that we'll be able to do it. Okay, so any other points you want to make?
No, just that you were inexcusably rude at the town meeting.
Well, you know, that's like calling the, that's like the fact calling the kettle black, so let's move on. Okay, next one. Any other?
I have. Nathan, I'm okay. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Kelsey, and thank you Chairman Shaw. Two, two quick points today. The first one is a follow-up to a comment I made at the public meeting. I promise I'll be civil. The, I had asked, you know, with with the MBTA ruling, which passed with six or eight votes. Before that happened, I had asked, had the planning board talked to Jay Smith about these zoning changes? It wasn't a rhetorical question. I didn't get an answer, so I thought I'd check in tonight for the opportunity to get get an answer to that question. I was curious. Has the planning board discussed this with Mr. Smith and was any discussion had?
The answer to your question, Nathan, is yes. But I don't feel, based on my conversations with Mr. Smith, and I was the one who spoke with him, just very generally, I don't really want to be the one to talk about his response. I'm going to let him do that when and if he wants to do that, but I, at this point, I'm not, you know, you're asking me to basically talk about my discussion in a, you know, private conversation with somebody else. And if he, if he wanted to say either for or against the TOVOD at the public meeting, I'm sure he would have. But I don't, but he didn't, so.
That was, no, that's reassuring, because my, you know, my, my concern was it is a, is it is a significant zoning change, and he is the primary property owner for that area, and I just out of courtesy would have hoped that our planning board had discussed it with him, and I'm glad to hear that you have.
Yes, we did discuss it with them, and, you know, I understand Jay Smith's position. He felt that whatever he said, whatever he said, he, it would be, you know, he'd be damned if he didn't and damned if, you know, damned if he didn't, damned if he didn't.
I can appreciate that.
So he didn't say anything. That's all right. I can understand that.
Okay, no, and and that's my, my question was just, if my, if my house was going to be rezoned, I'd like to have somebody tell me about it beforehand.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, absolutely. You're absolutely right, and you can read between the lines, but I did discuss it with him.
Okay, that's reassuring. Thank you very much, Chairman Shaw. The other comment I had, and I'll make it brief, is I'm aware that there is now, because Denise's election vacancy, if I can be of service, I am an engineer. I have a lot of community spirit, as you may be aware by now, and I'd be happy to fill in as an interim till the end of her term.
Well, the way it works is this, that the, the Board of Selectmen can appoint an interim planning board member, someone, and in fact, there are a couple of board members who had this happen, where they get appointed, they serve out to next, next election. In other words, it'd be May of two thousand twenty-three, and then they would run to for, you know, the full three years. So that's, anybody can apply to the Board of Selectmen for, if they are interested. Actually, I think a few people have already applied already.
Okay.
So you're welcome to do that, and, you know, at some point, you know, maybe they'll decide to appoint someone to fill the fifth, the empty seat.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jason?
Yeah?
Jason, on that point, I think last time the Selectmen asked the planning board for for our opinion about the applicants, so.
Yeah, they do ask for our opinion. That's correct, Tom, but you know, they're the ones who make the appointment, the interim appointment. So, yeah, sure, they're going to ask us, what do you think of this person? And that obviously carries some weight, but we don't make the appointment, they make the appointment, so.
Indeed, but it's good for us to know who the candidates are.
But I'm sorry?
It's good for us to know who the candidates are. So I'm glad that Nathaniel introduced himself.
Yeah, no, it's great. I mean, listen, I encourage anybody who wants to wants to do this and feels they have some level of qualification to submit an application to the Board of Selectmen and say, look, I'm interested, and of course, you're gonna, they're gonna have to run, you know, you're gonna have to run a, an elected race next May, and I have to say that I think I just have a sense that what was done Monday is going to spark a lot more interest in the planning board than there has been in the past. Just, just guessing, just because, so.
I just want to add that I thought when we went through this process for the position that Peter Cutner holds, that it was a collaborative effort. Yes, indeed, the Board of Selectmen looked for the input of the planning board. We had several qualified candidates present themselves. We went through a process of interviews, and I thought we ended up with a very qualified individual who was appointed by the by the Board of Selectmen, but as we turn the clock forward, that seat came up for reelection. Mr. Cutner fortunately decided he wanted to run under an elective elective process, and I think it's worked out well.
Yeah, I agree with you a hundred percent. We all get along. Okay. Anyone else? That's it? All right, well, um.
I do, I do have a phone number on here.
Me, someone called in?
Yes.
Do they want to, have they raised their hand, or they just?
We can't.
Oh, okay. So what do you want to do, Kelsey?
So I'm not sure if it's Peter Cutner or if it's a member of the public, but.
What, yeah, you, can you, you want to find that out, or?
Yeah, I unmuted them.
Hello?
Sounds like Peter.
No.
Hello?
Hi, did you want to make a public comment?
Oh, sorry, I wasn't sure if, um, you could hear me. I'm calling in, which I haven't done before. This is Ashley Shedd of seventy-one Granite Street, and I'm sorry, I just came in a little bit late to the meeting, but I was wondering if there was going to be any discussion on Sixth Gold Coast Lane this evening?
Uh, no, there isn't going to be discussion on Sixth Gold Coast Lane, and I believe, and I, when I get the official word, I'll let, you know, everyone know, but I think that application is being withdrawn.
Okay, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for taking my comment. Thanks.
All right, was that it, Kelsey? Is there anyone else?
That's everybody, Mr. Chair.
Okay, good. So we'll go to the next item, which is the minutes. I guess we don't, I guess, Kelsey, you sent some minutes this afternoon to Mary?
Yes.
Okay, I don't think she's had time to put her magic touch on those, so I would, I would not say, I don't believe we have any minutes to review tonight for approval. I haven't seen any that we have, so we can, we'll save that for June, the June second meeting. And Kelsey, are you going to still be doing this, these minutes and everything?
I mean, yeah, I was going to.
Sounds like a question in your mind.
I mean, I, yeah, I was planning on continuing to do them.
Great, good.
Well, that's good, because we need someone to do them, you know, and I don't, I don't think there's anyone else out there, so, yeah, that's great. That would be wonderful. Okay. So, next item, special town meeting. This is kind of a post-meeting discussion about anything that you other board members want to talk about, what happened? And I have some, I've talked to town council about, you know, going forward and what, what we can do to go forward. But I'll entertain any comments. I do have the breakdown, if anybody's interested. I know, Harry, you asked about this.
Right.
So let's talk about Article B, C, D, and E. Article B, which did require a two-thirds vote. It did not receive two-thirds. It received a majority, but that isn't enough. The vote was one sixty-three to four in favor of one twelve opposed, and by my kind of crude math, I thought we were about eighteen votes short of the two-thirds for that. So it did not pass. I was surprised. But at the same time, you know, I think anybody can, any of you other members can pipe in on this, that I wasn't surprised, because there was so much darn confusion going on that I don't know if a lot of people understood what we were voting on. It's a shame that it didn't pass, because people like our building inspector were hoping that it would make his life a lot easier, both by the definitions and also giving him enforcement power, but, you know, it didn't happen, so I can, if any, stop me if anybody else wants to comment, because I can tell you what I think we need to do going forward, based on my conversation with town council.
Well, I can echo your comment about it was a good solid majority. I got fifty-nine percent, my calculation, and.
Yeah, that's what the town clerk, fifty-nine to forty-one percent.
Yeah, a little over, a little over fifty-nine, so I think it was around twenty votes short, but I think a lot of it was because of uncertainties and confusion by a pre-discussing the other articles at the meeting.
Yeah.
I think there was confusion about the definitions and how they would play into the other ones, and then we have a use table in there, some things that really compounded people's concerns, and now I think having approved the other three articles, those, many of those concerns should be resolved. We don't know where they stand. The others are approved, and we can do it in light of those. I think it would be a more convincing argument that people now know where the, the rest of the bylaws stand. In terms of what we should do going forward, I think we put a lot of effort into this. I'd like to see it come to pass. It could be an opportunity to add some things. I think we had said in the past that if it passed special town meeting, that in the future, we could do more with coastal floodplain, for example. I'd like to pick that up. And any other cleanup things that we may have noticed along the way, I think we've, we've all had a more careful review of it since we first saw this luminous thing appear in, in one document, so those are my thoughts.
Okay, thank you, Harry. You have any thoughts, or?
Well, I, I agree partially with Tom. My comments are that there was a lot of confusing comments, whether by design or otherwise, and floor amendments were attempted, and I, I just believe that much of the, many of the voters who were there became confused, frustrated, and uncertain, and as a result of some of these moves that were made, that they, they simply basically reverted to what already existed and said, no, we're not going to change this at this time. I believe that it's certainly appropriate to make these changes. We have a document now, a, a living, breathing document, which we inherited that we've had, had to work with through thick and thin. It's, it's much less than, than ideal, needs to be cleaned up. So many areas of, of the zoning ordinance are inconsistent with other areas of the zoning ordinance. A lot of outdated and irrelevant terminology by cleaning it up, by introducing those things that are relevant today. And I think also going out and and presenting these, these needed changes. However, we do it, whether it's in small groups, whether it's, you know, additional public meetings, which I think we're going to have to do anyway. I believe that we can, we can, we can accomplish these, these goals, whereas we've, you know, already passed the other articles. It, I think, makes it easier. I don't know, though, that at this stage, trying to introduce something new, when there is so much newness, if you will, in these, in this document, might cause some people to be a little cautious. So that's, that's how I differ, I think, in my opinion, from what Thomas said. I'd, I'd, I'd be concerned about introducing anything new.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's difficult. Because, yeah, it was, I agree with every, you know, the sentiments of both of you, for the most part, as to why it didn't pass. I think there was, the process was not a good process. But looking on, looking forward, like you mentioned, Harry, that, you know, there are a lot of things in what was Article B that really needed to be done, that were completely uncontroversial, and we, we still need to do them. So with, with C, D, and E, for the moment, being, you know, out of the way, I mean, we're not out of the woods yet. We still got the Attorney General to review them, and, and, you know, they are novel in the sense that they only required, you know, majority votes, and that's, I think this is one of the, I don't know how many other communities have, have adopted these zoning bylaws under this new standard. So we'll, you know, we'll see what happens. But as far as Article B goes, this is what has to happen. The, the bylaw forty, forty A subsection five, I think it is, not the bylaw, I'm sorry, the mass general law, forty A subsection five says that if bylaw is defeated or not passed, I should say, at, at a town meeting, that one, the general rule is that one needs to wait two years before resubmission. However, like every general rule, there are exceptions. And the exception is that if the planning board prepares a report urging, recommending reconsideration and passage, which we'll obviously have to do here, that the, the bylaw can be reconsidered prior to the passage of two years. And the, the other thing is that we still have to go through, as you alluded to, Harry, we still have to go through public hearings all over again. We're going to have to do public process anew, or even though it's, it will be essentially the same bylaw, although maybe not, but it will be essentially the same bylaw. I know there's some changes that, you know, there were, there were some just plain old mistakes that, you know, MAPC maybe should have picked up on earlier, but, you know, they were in there, and in a way, it gives us a reprieve, so now we can correct those mistakes, and when I say mistakes, I mean, you know, these are like just things that were deleted, that should have been included, or something like that. It just, you know, maybe it was just too much for them to, to deal with all at once, but we can correct that. The other thing we can do, and I think we should think about this, is to take what was Article B and break it up into three or four separate articles, because that way we can take out if we, if we decide to go forward with this coastal zone, that will stand by itself, because, you know, we want to, we want to keep the core of this article, the things that are just not controversial, that make, but make all the difference to the day-to-day interpretation of the zoning bylaw. We want to keep those separate from anything that might engender controversy. That's, that's my view, you know, like, let some of the, I can think of a few things that we might break off, you know, into their own warrants and do that. And if they pass or fail, I mean, it's, you know, it's not the end of the world, but I know Paul Orlando was, he was disappointed that it didn't pass. So we're going to go through the whole process all over again. I think we can get reconsideration pretty rapidly. And it should be easier for us. MAPC, by the way, their, their contract is over. We don't, we don't have the ability to, to get their services again. That's the bad news. The good news is that I talked to our town administrator, and he said that we can work with our town council on these changes in lieu of MAPC, and that's, that's fine with me. So let's just, you know, take the, I, I don't know when we want to start this process. Maybe we can start it next month, you know, and decide, I mean, I know there are things right now that need to be corrected or changed, you know, that have nothing to do with substance. They're just things that needed to be changed, and we can talk about the other parts of it, too, you know.
Question, Jason, are we thinking that we want to bring this back to fall town meeting?
Well, I, I talked to Mitch about that. Apparently, they've got a pretty full plate for fall town meeting, but he did, you know, he did allude to that as a possibility, or also another, you know, special town meeting just for this. So it's a little early to, but, yeah, I don't want to wait a year, do you?
Well, practically speaking, unless we were to get a flood of applications, which I really don't anticipate, we could theoretically model through it. But we would have to absolutely no later than next year's spring town meeting re-present this.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're right. I mean, we're not, it's not like we have, you know, ten applications a month or something.
No, right.
We're getting hammered, because we don't have a, you know, the correct definitions and everything, but, and, you know, how long is it? How long is the planning board muddled through it so far? God knows how long. I mean, these things hanging around out there, and I, it is too bad about Paul and his enforcement power, because I think that could make a big difference to the public at large in terms of, you know, letting him do things that now he can't do. And it's, it's like people shot themselves in the foot by turning this thing down, because, you know, when they have a complaint, well, my neighbor's doing this, or something's happening here, or whatever, you know, well, talk, talk to the building inspector. He's got very limited authority, and he's not going to bring a criminal complaint against someone for, you know, a violation of some small magnitude, but he might write a letter, and he might impose a fine, but right now, he can't do that. So, you know, that's, that's the upshot. So let's, let's move forward. I think we all need, we all need a little breather. I thank both of you for, you know, toughening it out for that long, long meeting. And, you know, hopefully, the next one will be a piece of cake, but I agree that I think not having C, D, or E at the same time will make a tremendous difference in terms of public perception.
Jason, one other Jason, one other tactical aspect perhaps. I'm wondering if the demographics of a special town meeting are different, because you really would get some skewed toward people who have a particular interest in zoning, whether it's positive or negative. Whereas at a general town meeting, you'll, you'll get a more general cross-section.
You know, that's, I, I can't answer that, Tom. You might be right. There were a lot of people there on Monday, more than I had anticipated. But, you know, it's funny, even with that, how many registered voters do we have in town? You know, thousands? Okay, so we had, you know, like, we didn't even have three hundred people
Right.
at this meeting. Three hundred people deciding the future of the entire town in terms of zoning. It's just, it's kind of remarkable that people don't understand how important it is to come to these town meetings. This, this was a big deal. And, you know, every, well, I got this to do, that to do, my favorite show's on, or, you know, I gotta go make dinner, whatever, and like, you know, okay. So it's, it's pretty amazing, three hundred, three hundred voters out of thousands in the town decide these very important stuff.
I think there's something like fifty-four hundred, some number like that.
It's crazy. How few, what a, what a small sample in terms of the population. I don't know what to do about that, so, you know. Okay, that's, that's all I have to say, and I don't know if anybody else has anything else, well, we can move on to member items. So we'll keep on working. And we'll see what happens with the other three, you know, like I said, these are, these are new, and you know, the Attorney General still has to review them and approve them, and only then are we certain that they're gonna, you know, be, they're law now, it's law right now, that is the law, but if, you know, the, it doesn't become final, final until the Attorney General gives it her approval. So. Okay.
Can you imagine, can you imagine we're sort of like the, the test case for our current Attorney General and you can only imagine.
I can't imagine, yeah. That, that would be ironic if, after the Commonwealth, you know, adopts this law saying you only need a majority to pass these, you know, pro-housing provisions that the Attorney General then turns around and says, oh, you didn't do this right, or you didn't do that right, and it's, it's not valid, and you gotta go back to town meeting. That would be really ironic, but stranger things have happened. Okay. Member items.
I don't have. I have one thing. Penny Pilsner had contacted me about the general bylaw on the residential exterior lighting. And I gave her a few suggestions to clarify primarily one of the definitions. Things that have come up on our site plan review where it wasn't clear whether it really was, you know, dark sky or full and shielded.
Yeah.
So I gave her some suggestions, and I believe they, they passed through their their approval at the Government and Bylaw Committee meeting. However, we should note that in our, to the extent that there really is anything substantive in our zoning bylaw about non-residential lighting, we probably ought to recognize that that's going away as it's drafted. And we should, maybe I should, if nobody else is interested, work with government bylaw to extend the exterior lighting to more than residential.
Yeah, well, actually, it's good you brought that up, Tom, because Penny Pelzer is on the agenda for our meeting on June 2nd.
Oh, good.
You will be attending the planning board meeting, and there'll be a lot of discussion, including about what you just bring up here. And it's, it's good because you're right. I mean, we've got to coordinate with them, and that is that one of the items on the coordination list is the lighting. Yeah, it'd be great if you, you know, I know you have an interest in it, and you have the technical knowledge, it would be good if you did get involved, and I'm sure knowing Penny, she would appreciate it, too.
Okay.
Any other items? Okay, no other member items. There's a second public comment period?
Okay, I have Toby with his hand up. You're unmuted, Toby.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, Ninety-Five Granite Street. I thought that Harry Corslin's remarks about Article B and the presentation of it, how it might be redone, were right on target. Some of Jason Shaw's remarks were also helpful. If you hope to get it passed, give or take the indulgence of the Attorney General and the two years, it'd be well advised to divide it, as was said, into portions that are purely clerical and corrections and anything that's substantive. It wasn't made sufficiently clear at the town meeting that there were substantive changes in there. The tables of uses and things of that nature. And if it were to be fairly presented to the voters, you would have to have both versions up on the screen so that people could understand what they were giving up and what they were getting. Anything else isn't in good faith. If you're going to go through the coastal floodplain section, that's a separate effort. And if you're going to revise things, you certainly need to also address the housing balance section. That's affordable housing, which some of you profess an interest in, in. As for the town meeting generally, the three articles that did pass, you're pleased with what you've done, I gather. I would say that the three of you, also Peter Cutner and Denise Donnelly, have done the town major and lasting damage.
You know, just comment on that. Thank you for that presentation. One of the prior members of the planning board chairman, Sam Colburn, remembered that you were, you were opposed to Millbrook Meadow back then, when it was being created, so.
Being created?
I, I don't.
A million something squandered on, it existed.
Hey, you know what, don't interrupt me. I didn't interrupt you, don't interrupt me. And so that, you know, anyway, does, anybody else have any comments?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chair.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
移動
移動
Second.
Motion by Harry, seconded by Tom. We'll call a vote, Harry.
All right.
Mom?
Hi.
A vote in favor, meeting adjourned. It is ten after seven. A nice, short meeting, and we'll see you folks on June 2nd. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Jason. See you later, Tom.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.